So that if any council member or anybody wants to know what's going on, that we can debate with the department heads and the council without, you know, before coming at a meeting. Because then that way, to me, it alleviates or it solves our problems with, you know, anybody thinking that more of this...
Speak into that.
Yeah. No, no, and I just wanted to have those...
Speak into that.
That has been open meeting.
It does. And loudly and not having no...
Huh?
Loudly.
What do you want?
I was told not to do that.
Okay.
Just like a working session?
I was told that wasn't a nice thing? Everything was stupid and now we have to roll over in front of it.
Where's the box at?
Finding your guys' voices. Shane, you're out tight, look.
Well, just...
Like that. Cause you're out tight looking.
You don't need to yell them.
In front of you.
What?
We're not going to do that. And I didn't, and I didn't realize until you sent me out there for a special meeting. I was only such a...
No, no.
I didn't realize.
Too easy to tell someone.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand.
I want to work between all of us.
Yep.
I can say it next one day.
I agree with that.
I agree.
I'll try not to cough.
Thank you.
I haven't helped you.
Just like churches, room in front.
I've got something I need to see.
Sinus side use.
Shane's actually got it.
That, that you can act like you have a child and then go sit in the...
The cry room?
I don't know. He's definitely...
Uh-oh.
I'm just staffing. We're just gonna work by the...
Do you like this stuff?
I do.
She won't keep you awake forever?
No, right now I need to stay awake.
Yeah. Yeah.
That only eighteen-year-old drank that much Red Bull.
I am eighteen.
That's right, I forgot, I forgot. Looks like my grandmother. It was twenty-nine for fifty years.
It sounds like Chrissy said she was gonna go up to thirty-nine and then when she gets to thirty-nine, she's gonna start going back to her and Matt needs a coming point.
I'll take another one, thank you.
Sure. Yeah, I got one of them.
Step ahead of you.
You're better than I am.
Yep. Just get that.
Comes with calendars?
You can get it.
Oh, my gosh.
What's that?
Even though?
Yeah. My dad's two sisters. I was kind of like... Yeah, things like that. And then both of Peterson, and then they were Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Yeah.
Okay, well, call to order the special meeting in the Tracy City Council for Monday. Let me get, uh, March sixth. Um, we have approval of the agenda. And does anybody have any questions or comments about the agenda? The only, the only comment I have is number four. It indicates there's a public comment period. Uh, we can talk about that, but my inclination is to not have a public comment period, to have it saved until our next regular scheduled meeting, which would be the thirteenth if people want to talk to the council, uh, based on what was discussed today or tonight. Um, because I view, just, just generally, I view this meeting tonight as a way to, uh, talk with Madonna and have Madonna talk with us about her expectations of working with the council and our expectations of her. It's more or less like a working meeting, and I hope we all treat it in that way. Uh, we all have, uh, a vested interest in this city improving. We all have a vested interest in Madonna succeeding in her position, and no one wants her not to succeed. Uh, so I view this meeting not, um, as, as a meeting to express animosities or, or get upset with individuals, but more or less to have a dialogue to see how we better can work together and to avoid having to call, uh, a special meeting in the future. So based upon that, um, I would... Can't hear me?
No.
Well, first, let me apologize for having a cold. Um, but what I was saying is, is that on the agenda, it's indicated that there's a public comment period. Um, but my inclination is to not have that, is to save that for the next council meeting, which would be on the thirteenth. The reason, the reason being is I view this meeting as a working meeting to work with Madonna, to have her express what her expectations are of working with us and what our expectations are of working with her. Uh, there is nothing going to be decided other than us communicating with one another. So if there's things that people want to say, they feel the need to say, they would certainly have time to do that at the next council meeting. But I want to be able to just have an open dialogue tonight with Madonna and ourselves. Uh, because as I said, and if I'm repeating myself, it's for the benefit of me talking louder, we all have a vested interest in Madonna succeeding in her job. And we all have a vested interest in the council being able to effectively communicate with Madonna and vice versa, because we need to move our city forward. There's a lot of, there's a lot of things that we need to address as a city, and we, we need to be able to have effective communication with our city administrator and also amongst ourselves. So because of that, and in that vein, that's why I'm deciding if others disagree with me, they can, but I don't think a public comment period is necessary, because if there's things that people want to say, they can say it next week. So that's my view on that. Anyone else has any other discussion on that?
I would agree with that.
Okay, so with that deletion of the public comment, uh, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have, uh, mayor, council communications, we have the city administrator clerk administrator. And as I said at the beginning, um, I, I called this meeting so we can have a dialogue with Madonna and Madonna can have a dialogue with us. Uh, I will say to the council's benefit, if there are any issues that come up again, what I would prefer to do in dealing with any issues would be we have an employee relations committee that meets. If there are issues that come up, I think it'd be advisable to bring issues up to the employee relations committee. We can iron, iron things out that way, as opposed to having to call a special meeting in order to address all of the issues that arise. That's why we have that committee.
Well, just a point of clarification on that. The employee relations committee was set up for the employees to discuss things with management without getting the union involved. It was an employee-driven, not, not management-driven. That, just so you're aware...
No, I, I understand that, but I think I'd like to be able to...
Members that were on it had to go through state training and you had rules you had to live by and that. It's not, and I don't think anybody else has been to the training but Charlie and I. But that's the purpose of it, is to allow the employee, another avenue, rather than supervisor or union complaints, to discuss with management grievances that the employee has, to try and solve it at the lowest level.
Mm-hmm. And I'm saying what I would like to use that employee committee for, for things like this. I would rather be able to sit down with Madonna and talk about things that people present to me. And one way of doing it is by utilizing this committee. If other people object, that's fine, but I'd just as soon talk with Madonna, uh, if there's people bringing something up and vice versa. If she brings something up, I would talk to the individual person that's involved. So that's, that's my view. Uh, I don't feel like calling special meetings to be able to deal with things that we could sit down at a table and talk about. Um, but I didn't mind calling for this one, because we need to start somewhere, but I'm saying I am really loathe to ever call another one, because we can talk about things like adults and sit across from the table and talk about them. Uh, so that's just my view on that as to what may happen in the future. I don't anticipate having anything like this again. But as Madonna pointed out, two come out, two council members can call a special meeting if they want to. So even if I say I'm not gonna do it again, it doesn't mean two people can't call it. But to me, I would rather be able to sit down and visit with somebody across the table than have everybody take time out of their day to come out and talk about these things. That's my view, okay? So, uh, that being said, I know, Tony, you, you had contacted me about some things, about some contacts that you had with Madonna, correct? And I am not sure if you want to talk about those or not, but I know Madonna is aware of those, because I talked with her about it and I showed her what those concerns were. I don't know if you want to articulate each and every one or just generally...
Well, if you're familiar with them, I will say this. You need to move out of that office, and there's a reason there's a door on that office. So a lot of the discussions are kept between you and the party and not the public. That's, and it's sooner rather than later. And that would solve a lot of it. The other issue on that being, you have to empower the people in that office to, to be responsible for their jobs and be able to answer public questions instead of, "I'll wait and talk to Madonna." So that, that's it, that's the simple, that's the, that's a good starting point.
And I know, Bill, you had, you had contacted me too when you saw something in the paper as well. Uh, I don't know if you wanted to be able to visit about that with Madonna or...
Well, yeah, I was just concerned that, you know, we're not gonna solve anything in the paper. You know, that, that's not the way to go about addressing any issues that we have. And, and I'll just read it. I'm, I'm concerned about the comment, and I'm gonna, uh, read it here, um, that was in the paper last week. Contacted the next day for further comment. Peterson said that she was concerned that the actions of two council members were interfering with her doing her job as city administrator. She said that the council members who she declined to identify had no, had on more than one occasion conducted investigations of city-related business and talked with and given instructions to city employees without her knowledge or participation. And I guess I'd like to know who those council members were and who those city employees were.
So that, that was your concern about what she said in the paper?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, no, before I go any further, I know Madonna, you wanted this open to the public too, so I'll just put it on the record if that was all right with you, that we talked about these things openly in a public forum.
Yes, I emailed Shane today to tell him to tell you that it is fine with me that it's open to the public, because, um, I, I wanted it that way.
Okay. Um, now Madonna, I know that you've, you've contacted me too about, about some concerns that you've had with interactions with the respective members of the council. Um, you want to talk about those or how we could, uh, work better, uh, so not to have the conflict that you see over there?
The very first thing that I told Steve that I would like to see is possibly before each council meeting, maybe we can have a working meeting so that you as council members can visit with us one-on-one as the department heads, so that you feel that you're part of the decision-making process, instead of just at a meeting. Um, I feel that you, I don't know the right way to say it, but I feel that there's decisions being made that, that, that we as the workers and me as the city administrator are being overlooked, that you're not including us on what actions have been taken already to correct something. And I think that if we met, you know, if it was like an hour before every council meeting, we could debate that you guys could ask your questions so that you felt involved, so that you didn't, I don't, I mean, I don't know if you don't feel involved, but, um, I think that would alleviate a lot of the problems of what I feel of being told how I'm going to do the job.
So having a meeting like before the council meeting would probably alleviate some of that. And I know it may be difficult for some, say like you get here at 5:30, um, to do that. I, I, I think that's a great idea. I know what I had told Madonna and Shane was that prior to every council meeting, I could be here at 5:30, and I want to do that, to be able to sit and visit about what's upcoming, so we don't necessarily get surprises or whatnot. And we, and we don't normally, because we get the agenda ahead of time. But if there's last-minute things that we need to talk about, I think it'd be advisable to meet early, if people can. Um, so that, I, I think that's a fair resolution to something.
How do you do that without violating the open meeting law?
No, it isn't, it still isn't open meeting. It still isn't open meeting. It's still, they, I, I, we've talked about doing that before. There, there are other councils, other towns of like working...
Working meetings are allowed.
Yeah, so we can do that, that they're open to the public, but they don't have to be recorded or something like, I forget what it was.
Um, I'm not sure, I'm pretty sure they still have to be recorded.
Okay.
But I don't think any motions take place at them. I think that'll take place at the city council meeting. It's just an informative meeting to discuss, debate, you know, whatever, you know, is going on.
Right, that, that's fair. And again, maybe there's a time crunch with some people, but if we're available, we certainly could come.
And actually, it doesn't, I mean, and I'm always open to anybody coming in and, and talking about anything, just as well as I'm sure that the other department heads are too.
Okay. Um, anything else, Madonna, that, about how we can effectively work together?
Well, I don't think anybody wants to say it, so I, the only thing I can say is that, like I said at the last council meeting, even though everybody thinks that I'm being overly defensive, is that I have been told by a council member before that I have no business making a decision. I have been told that I'm being defensive. I have been told that this is how we need to do things. I have been questioned about why I'm doing it, and nobody's coming in and asking me about different things. Instead, we wait till a council meeting, and then, like I said, I feel like I'm being jumped on. And I am doing anything and everything that I can to make this city a better place. I have also put in the newspaper when my meeting was there, is I want to get rid of all the negativity. And I was gonna bring the newspaper, but I didn't bring the newspaper, and, you know, um, alls I can say is that there's a second side to every story, and several of the things that you talked to me about the other day, I'm, I'm willing to bet that at least four of them is only one side of the story and it's not the other side of the story. But obviously, we don't want, or we're not going to talk about that, but...
Well, no, let's talk about it. What is, what are you referring to?
Well, the Warren Riddell thing, that happened a year ago. That did not happen when I was a city administrator, and I sat on one side of the office. I was not behind the black file cabinets at that time. How can I be reprimanded or even disgust anything that, you know, he came in and he was after, Kim was the one that was waiting on him. And alls I did is stood up to defend Kim because of the way he was treating her. And I told him that if he wanted a reduction on his rent, that he had to bring it to the city council. That's all that was. But you didn't come and ask me and talk to me about it, you just automatically assume whatever happened from his side of things. That's one thing. I did not call the self-lost health and human services, Bill, about some thing with the apartment. I didn't do that. Why would I do something like that?
Who said you did?
Steve told me the other day that you are concerned that I am the one that turned in the EDA for something that happened at an apartment. I did no such thing. Why would I do anything like that?
I went calling an estate to an EDA meeting.
Okay.
No, but she didn't do that, and I had to ask her about it.
Yeah, and that's all I asked.
No, I, and that's why I had to ask her about it.
I asked the question, who, who called them? That's what I asked.
It wasn't me, but I, I mean, I, why, I mean, so I guess I felt that I was, um, from the understanding from talking with Steve, that I was the one that was accused of doing that. I did no such thing.
Yeah, I had to find out, because the question was brought to me, why were they called? So I had to, I don't know, so that's why I had to call them.
But I didn't, why, I mean, I've, I've told, I've told you multiple times, Tony, in, in the hallway or whatever. I mutually respect you. I like that you investigate stuff. I've told you that more than once. Bill, I think I've talked to you about that too.
Yeah, that's...
So, and I mean, the business with, you know, like the, the hiring of somebody, um, and going on what happened, I didn't want to stand up and tell you guys that. I didn't want to say that, but how could I not defend myself? I feel like I'm being harassed. A lot of people feel like you're being bullied.
So that's part of why we're having this, so we, we can have effective communication. And Bill, were you gonna say something?
Well, no, I, I guess I, I want to know about this comment that was made in the paper. Who, who, who are you referring to?
Well, I'm referring to you and Tony as the two council members.
And, and what, okay. And what employees did we give directions to?
Well, one, you've give Diane directions, um, Tony has emailed Diane more than once. You told her that minutes needed to be changed and things needed to be changed, and you also told me as a city employee that I had no business making a decision on something that I made.
No, I did not.
Yes, you did.
I did not. You may have interpreted that way.
No.
What I said, that's not the way I would have done it. That was it.
There was five witnesses in it, Tony, that hurt.
Well, that's fine, but it's beside the point.
It is beside the point. I want to move forward. I think this is...
And, and I was just trying to save Diane some time, because I read the minutes early. You can take it as me telling somebody what to do, but were they wrong? Were those typos in those minutes?
In your opinion, they were. It was a grammar error for one.
It was a street error on one and a spelling error on one.
One it was, but one was, no, it was a grammar error.
It's irrelevant.
Hang versus hanger, whatever.
Well, it's, what, what the thing is, I suppose to say, one way of talking about it, I mean, anytime we have corrections about minutes, we can do it at a council meeting.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, I mean, that's normally what happens.
That's exactly what's meant.
Well, I mean, and again, so that's why we're, we're doing these things. I mean, because again, because I, I personally, you know, I don't want to undermine what you're doing, and I don't think other people do, because you have a job to do. Um, so, you know, that's why we're doing this. So if, if there's, if there's things that people perceive as being not correct, that's why we talk about them. So it's better to have the questions answered than having them linger on and say, "Well, who contacted who and who said what?" So we, because we don't need that, because we need to move forward as a city. I agree with that completely.
Exactly, and that's why I would like the council members, if, you know, there's any question or any doubt about anything, why, you know, why we simply can't discuss it. I mean, I don't, I don't have a closed door. I mean, anybody that has come to city hall, and anybody can verify that I've done this, is I get my keys out and we come over to this side of the building and we shut the door.
Now, since we were talking about it, and I know one of the bigger, uh, the issues that Tony was bringing up is not having your own office. Can you, can you give an update as to what, what's the process is gonna be with that?
Well, originally, I wanted to go back in the break room, which is down the hallway in the back, you know, behind the room. And the reason why I feel that way is because I did do a poll of the survey of around, and there is, um, it's rare for a, for anybody, member of the public, to be able to just walk into a city administrator's office. I think they should have to go through, if you want to call it a reception desk or whatever, so that when there is a call for me, that the girls know, the girls, guys, whoever it is, that somebody knows that if I'm busy, that they're not interrupting or whoever else isn't interrupting, because I'm with somebody else at the time or in a meeting or, you know, whatever it is. Um, so I have talked to Shane about that. He does not think that I should go in a, per se, a closet at the back of the office. Therefore, what he and I discussed and suggested is in the corner of that office, that we just put up two walls, which would box off that, um, box off that room, and then that way the reception would be there. Um, all the internet's over there already, all the phone lines are over there already. Um, and he said that it would cost less than $2,000 to do it, and then there would be privacy.
And one of the, one of the concerns is, I know in the past, like having someone here, were there were concerns about people bypassing the office and just plopping right into this office and not knowing what the heck's going on? Is that fair to say?
That is true. There was multiple times that, um, we ran into an error, well, I guess I won't call it an error, but we ran into an issue where, like say, for instance, um, somebody's having, you know, trouble paying their water bill. Well, the city administrator usually don't, you know, know necessarily, you know, the history of how, whatever the account was. Um, so, you know, reality, um, the person that does know is completely being bypassed, and then the city administrator may or may not make a decision based on, you know, needing to find out the facts, so to speak, and that wasn't happening, so...
Well, one instance that we had, when the fellow with the dog licenses...
Yeah.
Was told, and I talked to Mike, and I was told I didn't have to do it. And one way of avoiding having that is having someone over there with everybody else, because having your own separate office like this may not be conducive to having everybody know what's going on.
What, what cities did you, when you said you referenced, I mean, we've had this office here forever. Um, city marshal, you, you can walk in, and they're a much bigger city than us, and the city administrator's right there in, in front when you walk in. What do you...
And I would be right there in front too, Bill, except for that it would be, that it, there would be a room that would be, you know, per se, a, a closed room for discussion. My idea of this room is that the police department needs to have all of their stuff in, um, located within the police department. In other words, um, the supply closets and evidence rooms and things like that, it's all supposed to be housed within the police department, okay? So the room that was the economic development boardroom is being turned back over in the process, and has been in the process, of being turned back over to the police department, and the economic development director is going to move into the big room with the chamber. And I want this room to be that conference room that, that we need. Conference room, break room, can be a combination of, of everything. Then more than one meeting can go on, um, at any given time. Then there is a backup to a, a conference room.
Anything else? Anybody want to visit about?
Well, I still haven't had my question answered on this, this article.
She did.
Yeah.
She said it was you and Tony.
Yeah, and how?
Oh, I, oh, I thought you were asking like the question as to who...
I want to know what employee was...
I said Diane and me, both of us.
By me?
No.
Oh, by me? Well, you referenced two council members in here.
Well, I guess it was all a matter of how it was written and how it was taken in context, Bill.
Okay. Okay? Anything else?
Um, I think I already said it, but again, like I said, um, at the last meeting with all the issues with the senior center too, what I had told Steve was that if we're gonna work together, what I would like, and maybe this is a perfect world and maybe I'm totally off the wall in thinking this, but why can't we back each other? In other words, what I mean by that is when somebody is complaining about something, why can't we simply say, you know, um, "Well, let's confer with the public works director, let's confer with the city administrator first and see what they've done about it", instead of just, I don't know, I, I don't want to say the wrong thing and I don't want to sound offensive, um, but, but we're not doing that. We're not working together. We're not communicating, we're not backing each other. Instead, it's, "Well, this will get done or that'll get done." And I mean, I know I sounded defensive, Bill, and I apologize for that, but there was things being taken care of over at the senior center. Had anybody simply asked...
having your own separate office like this may not be conducive to having everybody know what's going on.
What, what cities did you, uh, when you said you referenced, I mean, we've had this office here forever. City of Marshall, you, you can walk in, and they're a much bigger city than us, and the city administrator's right there in, in front when you walk in. What do you-
And I would be right there in front too, Bill, except for that it would be, that it, there would be a room that would be, you know, per se, a, a closed room for discussion. My idea of this room is that the police department needs to have all of their stuff in, um, located within the police department. In other words, um, the supply closets and evidence rooms and things like that, it's all supposed to be housed within the police department, okay? So, the room that was the Economic Development Boardroom is being turned back over in the process, and has been in the process, of being turned back over, over to the police department, and the Economic Development Director is going to move into the big room with the chamber. And I want this room to be the conference room that, that we need. Conference room, break room, can be a combination of, of everything. Then more than one meeting can go on, um, at any given time. Then there is a backup to a, a conference room.
Anything else? Anybody want to visit about?
Well, I still haven't had my question answered on this, this article.
She did. She said it was you who told her.
Yeah, and how?
Oh, I, oh, I thought you were asking, like, the question as to-
I want to know what employee was-
I said Diane and me, both of us.
By me?
No.
Oh, by me.
Well, you referenced two council members in here.
Well, I guess it was all a matter of how it was written and how it was taken in context, Bill.
Okay. Okay? Anything else?
Um, I think I already said it, but again, like I said, um, at the last meeting with all the issues with the senior center too, what I had told Steve was that if we're going to work together, what I would like, and, uh, maybe this is a perfect, perfect world, and maybe I'm totally off the wall in thinking this, but why can't we back each other? In other words, what I mean by that is when somebody is complaining about something, why can't we simply say, you know, um, "Well, let's confer with the Public Works Director, or let's confer with the city administrator first and see what they've done about it," instead of just, I don't know, I, I, I don't want to say the wrong thing, and I don't want to sound offensive, um, but, but we're not doing that. We're not working together. We're not communicating, we're not backing each other. Instead, it's, "Well, this will get done or that'll get done." And I mean, I know I sounded defensive, Bill, and I apologize for that, but there was things being taken care of over at the senior center. Had anybody simply asked? And nobody cared to ask. Instead, I just, I'm going to get in trouble for something that I, it wasn't intended.
Well, I, I'll be honest with you, as long as you brought the multipurpose center up. You, you asked the council to come over and field questions and, and try and resolve the situation, you asked for help. I applaud that. I applaud that. Otherwise, you wouldn't need to be there. So, you were asking ours, our help, our input to that particular problem. And then when we asked you questions about it, it wasn't about who you're hiring or not hired or why, we're just, it's part, the paragraph up above, what you put on everybody's desk about the investigation of City Affairs. It was just simple questions. There was no reason to-
Um, you asked me specifically why I didn't hire the person that was there.
No.
Yes, you did. Yes, you did.
I asked why you didn't hire somebody that's qualified, that's it. I didn't ask about any names, I didn't ask about anything other than that. I asked if you got somebody qualified, why didn't you hire them? Period.
Well, one, one of the things is, again, like having this, is you have to be allowed to do your job. And, and I, and I, and I do know, when I went over with, with Bill, uh, what was it then, one day?
We went and had coffee-
Yep, yep.
Like we-
Yep.
-committed that we would get more involved and go have coffee.
And, and my, and my, my thing was, is going over there, was to see that, to see what the condition of the place was. It had nothing to do with undermining your position, and when we, when we talked, I felt bad that you felt that way, because that's not my intention. Because all of us want you to succeed, because we know what it's been like for the past two city administrators. It's a revolving door, and it needs to end. We need to have someone that's going to be here for a while, and if we can't support you, and if, and there's some way I messed up by not giving you the feeling that you're supported, I apologize for that, because I'm not going to do that again. Because you need, you need to succeed, and if you succeed, then we all succeed. Go ahead.
I have a comment about the fact, though, that it would be nice if, if some people would like not dictate and ask, because I've heard like multiple things today, my phone blew up constantly today about this whole meeting and about some people that heard some things that you, Tony, had said, over there hollering away at all of them. So, it's, I mean, we've got to work together.
I don't have an inside voice, I don't holler.
I know.
Every employee that's ever worked for me was told, "You will know when I'm hollering." And I've never, of all the employees I've lost, only one's ever heard me holler.
Well, you evidently scared some employees and some customers.
Well, for that, I apologize, there was no intention of that.
I know, I mean, we have got to work together, because Tracy is a mess.
Well, I wouldn't say a mess, but I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not going to quabble over defin, I'm not going to quabble over definitions.
It's like they're squabbling all the time.
But what I will, what I will say is that we have major issues that we collectively need to deal with, and for these side issues, we shouldn't be spending as much time on them. So, that's why, and, and that's why, in order to alleviate it, if we can meet 5:30 before a council meeting, or if there are issues that people have, then certainly contact me, and I appreciate you pointing out, Tony, what the purpose of that committee was, but I think it could be expounded that if someone like Madonna, who I appointed and the council approved, if there's issues with my appointment, I would like to know about them so I can talk with her, because I want her to succeed.
We all want her to succeed.
Yeah, we all do.
I said that.
So, anybody have anything else? Thank you for taking time out of your evening, and thank you for tolerating a guy with a nasally voice. So, we have a motion, Dave, did you have something?
No.
Oh, sorry, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion if we're done.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you for coming.